X is zero point zero five. Find the probability of not picking the red. So we can just, uh, we can, if the probability of red is zero point zero five, the probability of not red should be one minus zero point zero five. We can calculate that, but uh, point nine, nine, five. There you go. It should be the probability of not picking a red swit- Okay, this way you can do the second one.
Alright, so the second one is simple enough. You just need to insert the values given in the question. So in place of m, you will insert four and in place of k, you'll insert seven. Then you just need to solve the equation.
Square root. Square root three. If we solve it, uh, we get seven, seven, nine, two, one, seven, nine, two, point one.
Yep, that's correct.
Yes, continue.
Okay, so the next question is PQRS is a quadrilateral where RST is a straight line. As we know that the sum of a quadrilateral is equal to three hundred sixty, we can just add the rest of the angles. Mark RST angle as x and then find the answer, find the unknown from the equation. Now we know that as PST, sorry, RST is a straight line, the sum of angles inside on one side of the line and the other is equal to one eighty. So as x is equal to eighty-three, we need to subtract that from one eighty to find the exterior angle, which is angle PST. One eighty minus eighty-three is equal to ninety-seven.
Hmm, that should be our answer. Okay, yes, please continue.
Alright, now there are the masses in kg of twelve parcels. Zero point three, zero point four, blah, 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 etc. Complete the stem and leaf diagram for the twelve parcels. Okay, so the key says that on one side of the equation, on one side of the line, the number given and that is displaying double decimal point. So zero point three and zero point four are given. We need to enter zero point seven and zero point eight. So we need to insert seven and eight.
Okay, so next, we follow, we'll follow the same tactics, same
Yep.
method. Inserting hmm, the smallest value first, which will be one. You have any other ones? Yes, we do.
One, one and two and two.
Two. Okay, yeah.
Alright, that's it.
And seven, we also have seven. Miss seven.
Yep, seven and eight. One, one, two, two, seven and eight.
Okay, yep.
And that's right. Now for the last row, we need to add two point one and two point three.
So we'll just add one and three, that's it. Okay, so the next one, find the median. So we can find the median by doing the total values, which will be twelve. Then we can, um, add one and divide by two to get our median values.
Yes, because the total number of values is a positive, is an even number. That's when we need to add one and then divide by two. So the number that we'll get is six point five. Now six point five means that the median needs to be, uh, achieved from the sixth and the seventh value, which is one point one and one point two. So what we'll do is one point one plus one point two divided by two.
Wait, I can just do it here.
Two point three divided by two. Our final answer, which is the median, is one point one five kg's.
Okay.
Uh, next.
Continue.
Alright, so this is a very simple question and means the number of where the position is of the number in sequence. So if you need to find the first three terms of the sequence, we need to insert the number of terms. So for the first one, we'll insert one square minus one, which is zero. The second one will be two square minus one, which is three. Wait, Max, let's take a break. Uh, yes, Mazita, what's your question? Can we unmute her? Max?
Uh, Val, can I do the favor? For a giveaway. I did that, I did that.
Could you please? Yeah.
Okay, so wait, I was a bit confused about finding the median. I think I had two questions. Um, first of all, isn't for you to find the one point to, uh, to, for you to get to one point one and one point two. Um, did you have to count, uh, six digits into the like, how did you end up getting, um, one point one and one point two?
Alright, Max, could you scroll up, please?
Yep, there we go.
Yeah, see, so here, if you notice in the stem and leaf diagram, we arranged the number in ascending order. So three, four, seven, eight, and then one, one, two, two, like that, alright? So we did that because when we said, get six point five, that means between six and seven, right? So we'll take the sixth and the seventh value. But we start counting like three, four, seven, eight. So these are the first four values. Then sixth value and the seventh value is one point one and one point two. Alright?
One, two, three, four, five, six and seven, yep.
Yep.
Oh, so, so basically what you're saying is we take the sixth and the seventh number because when you say six plus seven divided by two, it, it gives you six point five, right?
Yes, no, we did that because, see, twelve, our total number of parcels is twelve. And as it is an even number, we need to add one. But if it was, for example, thirteen, we wouldn't need to do that. Cause we need to make it an uneven number, an odd number, okay? So when we divide it, we'll get a number that falls between two numbers.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. I was a bit confused, but I, I think we're getting there.
Did you get it?
Yes, thank you.
That's great.
Okay, so let's go back to the question. Okay, this is, this is our first two terms. Now for the third one, we also do the same thing. Three squared minus one.
Eight.
Should be eight, yep. So you can just insert it here.
So the final answers will be zero, three and eight.
Okay, let, let me just do a second. Okay. Okay, let's move on.
Alright, simplification. As we can see that we have two terms that have the same base, which is y. The y here is known as the base. So if we write it in fractional form, it will be written as y cubed divided by y to the power of five. And now, when we have the same base and the elements are being divided, we need to subtract their powers. So in this case, we'll do y to the power of three minus five is equal to y to the power of negative square.
Yes, which can also be written as y, uh, one divided by y squared. Both will be marked correct.
Yes, cause when you move an element or its power from, uh, the denominator to the numerator or from the numerator to the denominator, its power changes sign. Alright, now for the next one, seven x to the power of zero. Okay, so now to explain this, you can take it, just first, let's just consider seven, alright? So first, let's just consider x. So x to the power of zero, what can, what else can it be written as? It can be written as x to the power of one minus one. And now, what does that mean? Let, just like we did in the first part, if we're subtracting, that means that the elements are being divided by each other. So we can also write it as x, x to the power of one divided by x to the power of one. And if you divide two same elements, their answer is one. So x to the power zero is equal to one. So the answer will be seven.
Okay, that's it.
Alright, let's go.
Okay, yes, uh, okay.
Ah, Max, you can take the lead here.
Ah, okay, 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 sure. Okay, let's start with the question. Hey, the scatter diagram shows the number of visitors and total amount spent in thousand dollars at a zoo on each of eight days. On one of the eight days, there are four hundred and ten visitors. Find the total number, total amount spent by the visitors during the day. Okay, to solve this, the number of visitors should be, uh, four fifty minus four hundred, so each block is fifty. And so, first line, wait, um, okay. I should still take. One sec. For, there you go. Is it, is it, is it visible? The color, this one?
Yes, Max, it is visible.
Yeah, uh, you can take over.
Yes, so here what we need to do is we need to start from the x value, which is the number of visitors being four hundred and ten. And then we need to connect it to the other marked values, uh, of the y axis. Okay, so if we take that, we can see that where x, where the line is intercepting with the marked point, the corresponding val- value is twenty-seven thousand. It will be twenty-seven on the y axis, but as is given, the total amount spent is given in thousand dollars. So the answer for this one will be twenty-seven thousand.
Okay.
This question is really for like testing your, uh, plotting abilities. So you can see where the points are marked accordingly, correspondingly to the x axis, x axis and y axis.
Okay, continue.
Alright, now the next question is, could you scroll down a bit?
Yep.
Information for the ninth day is shown in the table. Plot this information in the scatter diagram. Yes, this is quite similar to the other question we just did. But this time, we're the one that needs to be, we're the one that needs to do the plotting. So in the x axis, we'll take the value one seventy-five.
It should be, uh, sixty, uh, they should be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, and this value draw, we can, the easier way to plot a diagram, uh, plot a graph point is to take first the x value and make a vertical line. Then take the y value and make a horizontal line. Then where they intersect, you can draw the point.
Okay, they should be pretty straight. Then it'll be nine.
Yes, so that point where they both are intersecting, that point is the point that we were asked to plot.
I can find the plotter. Yep, this works.
Yep, that's fine.
Now brush, listen. Could we use Photoshop at this point? Being too much of a hassle.
Yes, I think we all get the point that we need, that point where the two lines intersect, that will be the point.
Yes. So move on. Okay, draw the best line of best fit
Ew.
on the scatter diagram. Good, okay, yes. Say, Bismillah before starting the drawing. Okay, for the line of best fit, uh, you need to draw the line in a way that both sides of the line has equal number of plots slash points or equal distance from the plot to the line. You get what I mean? So let's see. Too big. One, two, nope, one side has more.
Alright, that seems great.
Yep. This looks great. Okay, we move on.
On the tenth day, the total amount, continue, continue.
There we go, continue, continue, continue.
Alright, on the tenth day, the total amount spent is twenty-two thousand. Estimate the number of visitors on this day. Alright, this is quite similar to the first one that we did, uh, where we took the x value, x axis value and found the y value. This time, we just have to do the opposite. Please scroll.
Uh, sorry?
Please scroll upwards, thank you. Alright, so we'll mark the, we'll draw a horizontal line where y value is equal to twenty-two.
Y value will be twenty-two, sorry. Here.
Yep.
Oh. Wrong one. There we go.
Alright, that's great. And the point where in this case, that is around, uh, three twenty, number of visitors. Alright, that's great. The answer can be quite different for different pupils, uh, depending on their best fit line, which has a multiple options available. Alright, let's go on.
Is this supposed to answer it?
Yep, three hundred twenty.
Sorry, I missed it. Three hundred and twenty. Okay, well, without a ca- without using a calculator, work out two de- two over nine divided by five over six. You must show all your workings and give your answer as a fraction in a some platform. Okay, do, first, we rewrite it with the reciprocal of five over six, which will be six over five. Wait, okay, yep, then we can just multiply it to get, uh, six is a twelve divided by forty-five. We can simplify it by dividing both of them by three, which will be four divided by fif-teen, yep, fifteen. So the answer will be where is my text? Four over fifteen. Okay, yes, this one?
Alright, so this question is really easy, but it's prone to a lot of errors. So we'll do it in the fractional form. Okay, so what is, first of all, the question is change three hundred meter per minute to kilometer per hour. Another way to pronounce this value is by saying three hundred minutes, meters per one minute, right? Cause like when it's minutes aren't given, that means one. So three hundred minutes, three hundred meters per minute. Alright.
Yes.
So to convert that meters into kilometers, we will divide it
Let's see then, arrow.
Hmm.
Three thousand, three hundred divided by thousand. Okay, yep.
Yes, alright. So this, in this way, we have converted the meters into kilometers. But in the next step, we need to do is to convert the minutes into hours. And for that, we'll do one divided by sixty.
Okay.
And now, in order to find the final value, which is kilometers per hours, we'll divide the answers with each other. So three hundred divided by thousand divided by one, one by sixty. Yes, exactly like that.
Okay, this works.
Yeah, so the answer will be eighteen kilometer per hour. Yes.
KM per hour, there you go. Uh, Venn diagram, one of my favorite types of questions in, I see, uh, in maths.
All yours.
Okay, continue. Hmm, you could do it, you do the favor.
Alright, alright, okay. So the question is find N represents a number of values. So find the number of values that are in A intersection B not. A intersection B, okay, so the easiest way to do this question is to first mark the area which is A intersection B. Yes, exactly this one.
Which will be done with a
Yep, the intersection is the area where the the, the elements that are in both of the sections fall. Alright, so no, we know this area is the area marked thirty-three. And now and now we need to take everything besides A intersection B, which is twenty-five plus twelve plus three, which is going to be fourteen.
Oops, yeah, there you go.
Alright, that's great.
Okay, let's go, let's move on.
Alright, this question is amazing. It is very confusing, but it's amazing.
Yes, but the sad part is only gives one mark.
Ah, yeah, that is quite sad.
It is what it is.
Alright. A, B, C, D, E, F and G, H, K are triangles with all vertices on the circumference. Scroll up, scroll up.
Sorry.
On the circumference of a circle. From this list, draw a ring around the line that is a diameter of the circle. Alright. So the thing is, we need to consider the properties of a diameter in the circle. The diameter will form a triangle with which a ninety degree angle will be formed. So if you see all the options given, let's consider triangle ABC first. One angle is ninety-four. So we already know that it's not possible that, uh, one of them will be ninety, right? Cause the six, six degree angle is also given. Then we have triangle GHK in which two angles are eighty-five. So it's possible once again for it to be included in the diameter section. Then the last angle, last triangle, DEF, one of the angles is eighty-two and the other is eight. So the last angle falling will be ninety. Alright, now we know the DF is making a ninety angle, but that's not the answer. EF is not the answer. Angle is D. The line is DE because the diameter will form a triangle with the ninety degree angle and be the line on which the ninety degree angle will be falling. So the answer is DE. Oh, I can see the bear crying over the circle theorem in the chat. Hi, is a bear?
Something was something.
It was something. Alright, uh, question number twelve. F is a common factor of fourteen and twenty-eight. M is a common multiple of ten and twenty-five. P is a prime number. Work out the largest possible value of F over NP. Okay, so let's do the this fraction, F over MP. If we want the largest value of F over MP, what we'll need to do is have the highest possible value of F, but the lowest possible values of M and P. So as F is the common factor of F for fourteen and twenty-eight, we'll need to have the highest common of fourteen and twenty-eight.
So, do you have to write that?
So first we need to note down the factors of each numbers. So one, two, seven, fourteen. Seven.
And fourteen, yeah.
Yep. And for twenty-eight.
One, two, uh, four, seven, fourteen, yep, four, correct?
Yep, I think so. Great, so now the highest common factor here. Yes, exactly. Alright, so the highest common factor here is fourteen because it is a common factor and it is the largest number that is available in the list.
Well, well, that is gone, but yeah, it's fourteen.
Yes, just now that the highest common factor of fourteen and twenty-eight is fourteen. Now M is a common multiple of ten and twenty-five. Now what did we say? That as it is in the lower part of the fraction, we need to have the lowest, smallest value of M. To get there, we'll get the LCM, lowest co- common multiple of ten and twenty-five. And that is, if we do the LCM formula, that is fif-
Okay, I can straight away that, yep, there you go. The smallest prime number which is two, the best number.
Alright.
Okay, so now we just fo- put it in, uh.
Now we need to input all the values into the F over NP formula. Fourteen over fifty times two.
It's two.
Zero point one four.
Will be one fourteen.
Zero point one four.
There, um, pretty straightforward for four marks, okay? Very fun.
Yeah. Let me just check if there are any raised hands. Oh yes, we have one, Boni. Uh, could you unmute him, them?
Yes. We can. I've already accepted their request to speak. You just have to accept it back.
Um, I don't know if they're interested. Uh, Boni, do you have a question?
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. What's your question?
So I have a doubting twelfth question. After removing, uh, removing the common factors, what we have to do?
Alright, the factor, we don't remove ticket. If F is a common factor of fourteen and twenty-eight, highest, we need, we know that we needed the highest value, right? Cause F is in the upper part of the fraction. So to get the largest possible value, we needed the highest and biggest value. So we took a number that was common between the farers of fourteen and twenty-eight and that was the largest number over there.
Yeah, so we got fourteen.
Yes.
Yeah, so after that, what we have to do?
Then we placed it in place of F in the equation, F over MP. Alright, if you visualize, try to put fourteen, consider it. And we did the thing, if you can see the equation in place, we put fourteen in place of F.
Yes.
And M is equal to, we found that as fifty. And P, the prime number, the smallest prime number we need is two. We input this into the equation, F over MP. So fourteen did by fifty times two. Fifty times two is hundred, so fourteen divided by hundred is zero point one four.
Okay, so yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
So shall we move on?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, let's go. Factorization.
Do you wanna lead this one?
You can lead it.
Alright.
I don't mind.
So we need to find factorization. We need to find the biggest number that is common between eighteen and twenty seven. Alright, first let's consider the coefficient eighteen and twenty seven. The common number between this, the common factor, the highest common factor will be nine. And from the variables that were given, P X and for the other one is P. So we need to find the common factor, which is P.
P.
Yeah, now.
There you go.
We need to divide, we need to divide the elements by nine P. So eighteen divided by nine is two.
Two X will be remaining.
Yeah, and P X divided by P is X. We put the negative sign, twenty seven divided by nine is three. And P divided by P will be nothing. So that's just P.
And that will be our answer.
Yes.
Maths for life.
Yep, alright. So this question is about factorization. So we need to take, well, obviously here we have to take the common factors again. So we'll place the ones with the common factors together, M T. Minus M. Minus N. Plus N T. Alright, now we move on to the next slide and we see the common factor. This called in some places, some people call it double factorization. Cause we're dividing all of the elements of the expression into two parts. For the first two expressions, we'll take one element common and for the last two, we'll take one element common. So for the first two, we'll take M common, M times T minus one. Take N common then.
Okay.
Positive N. Plus N. Times minus one plus T.
And to make a life simple, we can just rewrite it to visualize as one minus T.
Yes, thank you. Alright, so now we can see we have two common brackets, who are connected as N plus N times T minus one.
Okay, that is it. Simple for two marks. Uh the end term. Okay, yes, let's go. Let's start. We can continue.
Yeah, give me a second, please.
Okay, yes, sure, 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 sure.
Alright, let's go. Okay, we need to find the end term formula of this. Okay, as we for all the sequences that we're doing, the first step is to find the difference between the consecutive term. In this case, for this first one, the common differ- the difference is six, sorry, nine.
Seventeen minus eight, yep.
Nine, then thirty two minus seventeen is fifteen.
Fifteen.
Then fifty three minus thirty two is twenty one.
Twenty one?
Then eighteen minus fifty three is twenty seven.
Two and seven, twenty seven.
Yes, alright. So now if we take into consideration the difference between the second row, this already made differences, the difference is common. Fifteen minus nine is six, twenty one minus fifteen is six, and twenty seven minus twenty one is six. Just see that if the second difference of the equation is equal, we know it's common, the difference between them is common, we know it's a quadratic sequence. And quadratic sequences are normally in the form of A N square plus B N plus C, right? So to form that, first we need to divide the second difference by two. That will be three. So what we need to do here is we need to take, so this we can consider as three N square. The number we find by dividing the second difference by two is the is the constant, the coefficient of the N square. Alright, so now we need to take the original term, which is eight, seventeen, thirty two, fifty three and eighty. And we need to subtract the three N square formula from it.
So do you mean to write all of them?
Yeah, first you need to write, rewrite the sequence, the origin, age seventeen, thirty two, fifty three and eighty. And from these terms, respectively, we need to subtract. Can you hear me?
Me? Yeah.
Alright. And from the sequence, we to subtract three, twelve, twenty seven, forty eight and seventy five. No, write it in the row below it.
Yeah, sure. Three, oh.
Three, twelve, twenty seven, forty eight and seventy five.
Four, eight and seventy five.
Yes, alright. Now, if you notice, there's a trend going on here. If you subtract five from eighty, you'll get five. And that will be similar thing for all the rest of the numbers. Yep, that's right. Yes, it's great. Alright. Now we will consider this new sequence that we formed, five, 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 five. And we need to find, this is an arithmetic sequence now as you can see. And for that, we'll use a formula for arithmetic sequence, A plus D times N minus one. Where A is equal to five, the difference is zero. Times N minus one. So our final answer will be five for this arithmetic sequence. So now, as we said earlier, the seek for a, the end term for a quadratic sequence is A N square plus B N square, plus B N plus C. As we don't have a C term here, so the final answer will be three N square plus five. This was a complicated question, so I'll just see if there are any raised hands. Alright, yes, we have Sheikh Dark. Do you have a question? Can we unmute him, please?
We have the answer. We have invited him.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, ah you can do it.
Could you repeat that?
Sorry, which one would you like to repeat it?
Just give me the uh entire summary in.
You're lagging a lot. I cannot hear you. You're lagging a lot. Maybe write down your question in the chat?
Yes, that should be better.
Alright, I think they're, I think they're pushing up.
Six, yep.
Why not? Oh yeah, that is a very easier way to do, but like um it's actually not part of the syllabus. It's just um an additional equation that's given, it's not really in the syllabus for the I G C C anymore.
Yep. Let's move, but you can still use it though.
Yes, we can, definitely. Yeah, but it's not included, so we're not doing it officially. It is recommended though. It's a very easier way to do it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Alright, and for you, Shay. Dark, alright, the steps of this equation uh for this question. Alright. First, you need to find the first difference between all of the consecutive terms. Then you need to find the second day sequence. If that sequence is constant throughout the equation, then you need to divide it by two to get the coefficient of the N square. Now, that coefficient is three. So we're going to make an equation from the three N square, alright? And that will be three, twelve, twenty seven, forty eight and seventy five, as Max has wrote down there. And from this, and this we will subtract from the original equation. Is that clear? Alright, and now when we find the new difference, this equation that we found, five, 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 five. This is our new arithmetic equation. And we're going to, to get the formula for this one, we're going to insert it in the A plus D times N minus one equation, where we got five. So our final answer is three N square plus five. Alright, that's great. Yes, Samantha, do you have a question? Um, Max, could you please unmute her?
Y- yep, done.
Um, so basically, um I just wanted to know, um isn't for A plus D, you're saying that um A is the the difference for the um three, twelve, twenty seven sequence, right? The one you got from three N squared, right?
No, in that formula, we used A as the first term of the sequence. And the sequence that we used is that one, the one that we got after subtracting. Could you highlight that one, please?
Yes, uh where were we? Sorry, I was drinking water, yes.
Yes, could you please highlight the five, five, five equation? Yes, this part.
There you go.
Alright.
Yeah, the whole thing is in a block, so I cannot.
It's fine, it's fine. Alright, Samantha, so the last part where we got the difference between the three N square equation and the original equation. That part, we got the term sequence, five, 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 alright? And in this case, the first term is A, five. And the difference between all the other terms is zero, so the rest of the equation will be nil. So the answer we got for this arithmetic equation is five. And the final answer will thus be three N square plus five.
Okay, so let's say the difference was not five, five, five for each of them. And then it turned out to be like um maybe three, six, seven, um or something like that.
Alright. Alright, in that case, we'll take D as for example, let's say the difference between the terms would be one, alright? So Max, please note it down.
Okay.
We're going to take it uh the same way and let's say if it was A plus D times N minus one.
N minus one?
Yeah, and in this case, A is still five, and let's take D as, let's say, two.
Two, okay, yep.
Okay, so F five plus two times N minus one. In this case, Samantha, we're going to just solve it again, five plus two N minus two. Huh, so here our answer will be two N plus three. Thus making our final answer to be three N square plus two N plus three. Is that clear?
Oh yeah, so I'm saying that the diff- so I'm saying that D is um.
The difference between the terms, the common difference. That's why we named it D. Alright.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, I think we can move on to the next part now. Let me just check if there are any more raised hands. Yeah, I don't think we have anymore for now. That's great. Alright, the next question we have is solving twelve X minus three is greater than equal to four X plus thirteen. Okay, so the easiest way to solve this question is co- consider the inequality to be an equal sign. So we write it as twelve X minus three is equal to four X plus thirteen. We're going to solve it the same way we would have solved in the symbol equation for X, twelve X minus four X.
Yep.
Is equal to sixteen. Thirty plus three. Yeah, that's great. Alright, we just moved the elements to one side to make X the subject of the equation. So now we have yes fruit. Alright, so eight X is equal to sixteen and X is equal to.
The in divide eight.
Yep.
Which will give us two.
Yes. Alright, so something, uh there is one element in this question that some people find confusing. Okay, so the final answer, Max, will be X is greater than equal to two.
Wait, let me do this. There we go.
Alright, so here we have the answer. Okay, so there is one element of this question that some people find a bit confusing. That is if, for example, let's say we took it the other way around. We took it negative three, negative thirteen is greater than equal to four X minus twelve X. Could you write that down, please?
Negative thirteen is.
Negative thirteen, negative three.
Mm hmm.
Is greater than equal to four X minus twelve X.
Four X minus twelve X.
Yes.
There you go.
So now, if you notice, the answer for the X coefficient that we'll get will be negative eight X, alright? So that can be a bit confusing. Cause like when we have to move it, move the negative eight into the denominator of the left left hand side, we have to divide it by minus eight, right? But when that happens, when we divide the inequality by a negative number, we need to swish the sign. So in this case, it will become negative sixteen divided by negative eight is greater, is less than equal to X.
Eight.
Less than equal to X. But the answer will obviously, it will remain the same. It will be two is less than equal to X. Which is just the opposite way of writing X is greater than equal to two. Alright, that's great. Let's move on. Uh let me just check for any questions. No re- attempts. Okay, that's great. Alright.
Physics.
Alright. Yes, that's great.
Physics and math are the best subjects.
Please do not insult chemistry.
I did, I did.
Alright, alright.
I I love chemistry, I love chemistry.
Let's see. Abdul draws the speed time graph for a journey. The graph has four sections, A, B, C and D. Alright, so let's see the question. Complete these statements about the speed time graph. This is very important to remember which graph we're talking about. This is speed and time, alright? So let's see. Section dash cannot be correct. Okay, if you just, if you just look at this question, you can simply tell which can, which cannot be be possible, right? If you look at section D, you can see the time cannot go back, right? You can't go two hundred seconds and come back to ninety seconds. So the section D cannot be correct. Not yet, at least not yet.
Not yet, okay. You know, there's a possibility in the future. So since constant speed, the speed time uh diagram, the graph, the line will be smooth, straight. Which you can see is V here. And in section dash, this, it shows that it's deceleration, that means it's slowing down. In C, we can see it's slowing down, the line went down. That's the best way I can explain it, I'm sorry. Move on, continue.
Alright, and the last part is section A shows acceleration of dash meter per second square. Alright. So in a speed time graph, if you're studying physics, you know that the gradient of the speed time graph is is acceleration. So we need to find the acceleration that is the gradient of part A. Okay, Max, could you scroll up?
Yep, I am already.
We can use a simple, yeah, sorry, thank you. Uh we can use a simple equation of the gradient, which is equal to M is equal to Y two minus Y one is equal to X two minus X one.
So ten minus zero?
Yes, ten minus zero divided by thirty minus zero.
So it should be ten over thirty, which will give you the answer of.
Zero point. Zero point two two three.
Yep.
Alright, let's move on. Uh, let me just see for questions, no questions. That's right.
Okay, that's good.
Alright. The distance traveled in the first thirty seconds of the journey is dash meters. Alright. Distance, the, the area under a speed time graph is equal to the distance traveled in that area, alright? So for the first thirty seconds, we have triangle. So for the area of triangle, we have half into base into height. Yes. Alright, so our base is thirty and our height is ten. Thirty times ten divided by two.
Which is one fifty, one fifty.
Meters, yes, that's right.
Half of three hundred.
Alright, let's go on.
Okay.
Ah, triangles.
Life of maths.
Alright, question number seventeen. In triangle A B C, A C is equal to A B. D is the point on B C such that A D is perpendicular to B C. Complete the following statements to show that triangle A C D and triangle A B D are congruent. A D is perpendicular to B C, so that angle dash is equal to angle dash is equal to dash degrees. Alright, so here, okay, the first thing to notice is that we need to find two angle, angles that are equal. Now, this can be either of the angles, but in the last part, we can see that we need to know which angle that is. And in this case, there are only two angles that we can find, that are, that are angle A D B and A D C. And as they are perpendicular to the line, their answer is ninety degrees. Alright.
Okay.
A C is equal to A B is given our information, side dash is common to both triangles. This is quite easy, is A D. Common to both triangles, by this, they mean that. By this, they mean that a side that they share. So that will be side A D.
Yep, move on.
Alright, triangle A C D is congruent to triangle A B D because of the congruency criterion. Alright, now congruency criterions, they mean by the things that are like same in this triangle, right? So here, in this case, we have one side is common and two angles are common, right? So we'll use the criterion A S A, angle, side and angle. That's it for this one. Let me just check for questions, because this question was confusing. Alright, now we have some smart people here that don't want to ask any questions.
That's.
Alright.
Bearings, yes.
Uh, yes, Tuba, wait, I think we have, we have a question.
From who?
Uh, Tuba. I think they're tapping the chat.
Yes. The last part?
Yeah.
Uh, what's in it?
Um, food circuit, uh, criterion means criteria. And I, sure, it is a syllabus. Like, I think we have different types of criterias, like A S A is angle, side angle, then we have angle, angle, angle. Then we have side, side, side. Oh, the A S A property, explain. Alright. The A S A property, the properties, these criterions are that are common between the two triangles, right? So if for congruency, the criti- one of the, thank you Enigma, A S A, S A S and S S S. So A S A means angle, side and angle. The, the two triangles have a sharing angle, a sharing side and a sharing angle. So in this case, that is angle A B D is equal to angle A C D. And A D is the side that they're sharing, so two si- and one side. Is that clear, huh? Alright.
Keys, we got the key.
Alright, bearings, bearings.
I'm barely, I'm barely bearing with this.
Bear with me, Max.
I am.
Alright, okay. So there are actually multiple messes, methods to do this question. Uh, firstly, the most commonly used one for this one. We have the bearing and the ratio method, alright? So if X ratio Y is equal to two ratio seven.
Very written.
Yes. Alright, sorry. If X ratio Y is equal to two ratio seven, then we can write Y is equal to seven by two X, that is three point five X, right? By doing the.
Yep.
Excuse me a minute. Uh, Max, could you please deal with the question in the chat while I come back?
That's, uh, sure, sure, yes, chat. Just what question do you have? You're welcome. Well, I'll go for a water break then, because we're getting.
Alright, did you get the question?
Oh, okay, never mind. Ah, no, that's the writing it. I say yes.
Okay.
No.
As S A S would be side angle inside.
This here is opposite. Wait, uh, oh, okay, no, my wrong thing. Are you still waiting for the question? Damn, okay. I'll check the MS for you then. Uh, twenty two. Okay.
Alright, let's just check that. The MS, did you check it yet?
Yep, I'm taking a screenshot for them, wait. It's in the chat. Question, which question was it again?
Um, we are on question number eighteen. No, sorry, uh, question number seventeen. Seventeen, part, yeah.
There you go, I'll check the mess as well. I'll send it in the chat. There you go.
It's right, I think.
There's the question seventeen.
Yeah, I think, why does it said, uh, R H S? Right hand side?
The other BS, Matt said.
Oh, everyone was wrong. No, I don't think so.
No, 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 okay, okay, okay. A S A is correct. Because R H, okay, let me find the actual meaning of R H S. Because I remember teacher teaching me and he's like, you don't need, just use A S A.
I think, uh, somebody's saying in the chat, I think for right angle triangles, we override with R H S.
Yes, we have L H S and R H S, the informal short and, uh, uh, left hand, okay? Wait, so technically, technically, A S A could be marked wrong.
Could be.
Could be, yeah.
Alright, let's just pretend that that ever happened and write R H S.
Yes, yes, we're still students, so yes, we make the laws.
Alright, so somebody's saying it means right angle hyperteneside. Oh, alright, thank you sushi.
Go sushi. Okay, yeah, let's continue.
Uh, wait, um, I think we have a question from Sheikh Not Pixel. Uh, I, that is quite a detailed question, it's not a short question.
Yes, yes, it's already nine seventeen, okay, we got like few more minutes.
Yeah, we have a few more. It's alright, let's just stick with, uh, paper two two for this time.
Yeah. Next session, come back for paper four.
Yeah. Stay tuned, stay tuned.
Yep. Oh, this is also a bearing question, it's okay, this should works. Let me download it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so what is the question?
Now, bro, even I can bear it. Age, and.
Wait. Okay, here we are. Okay, so I'm guessing Pixel, you're needing the first part? Which part do you have a problem with? Yes, the help is here. C and D, alright. Wait, there is no part C and D.
Am I blind? Yeah, even I can see it.
No, no, th- there isn't any, it's part C and D. Could you please specify which part you want? Okay, part two A and B, alright. Okay, do we need to? Do we need to solve the previous parts in order to get the last one? I'm pretty sure we, do you need to do that? Because they're usually connected.
We do, we need to, yeah.
Yes.
It's a format question. I still don't see C and D, okay, by the way, I still don't see C and D.
No, no, there isn't any C and D, they're talking about part two of A and B.
Oh, bro, okay, I'm going crazy over here, okay?
Okay, you know, the one, they have a wiggly line beside.
Yes, yes, I saw it, I saw it, don't worry.
Yes, that one. Five more questions.
Yes. Ooh, spicy. We should go in match channel for raps.
Yes, we should. The aircraft took two minutes forty four seconds to fly from P to Q. The aircraft reaches destination thirty nine minutes six seconds after flying over Q. The flight ended at fifteen O three. At what time did the aircraft fly over P? What?
Okay, okay.
Bro, bro's trying to embarrass us.
Oh. Wait, this is an I G question? I'm missing some detail, bro. The session was supposed to end right now, but we got this question, Val.
No, we still have ten minutes.
We start, we started at eight twenty though, it's nine twenty now.
Oh, alright. Shit.
Yes, it's fine, we'll solve this, and we still have like few more minutes, uh, few more questions, but, ooh, yes, it is one hour.
Alright, I'm trying to do I G C S in a fly plane.
Wait, no, no, something is missing here, no. Something has to be missing.
Alright, I think there are some complaints about the quality in the chat. Food circuit is not happy.
Quality of what?
Um, the quality of the picture.
Streaming on forty four, I'm, I'm streaming on four K, bro, two K, bro. There you go, bro. So blame the internet on me, not my internet.
Nah, it's, it's, it's their fault, it's their fault. I can see some chat saying, I can see a clearing.
Ah, I have something for you.
Um.
My iconic line.
Bruh.
Yes.
Yeah, this thing is better now, let's go.
Yes, let's go.
Alright, why don't we just finish the paper first? I think we can be done with that, because a few questions are left.
Yes, yes, we, we definitely can.
Uh, thank you, Val. Alright, uh, were we here?
We were at question eighteen, bearings, yes.
Yes, alright. Alright, it's unbearable by now. Okay. So, so we took the ratio, X ratio Y is equal to two ratio seven. And if we do the cross multiplication, we can get. We can get Y to be equal to two, seven X divided by two, is that right?
Yes, that is in fact correct.
Okay. Now that we have. Now that we have this equation, we know that, okay, let's see. One eighty minus X is equal to three sixty minus Y. Could you write that down, please?
Three sixty minus Y.
Why? Yeah, alright, because we know.
I wrote Y.
Yep, alright. So we can see that the angle that is forming between the parallel lines is, and their sum is equal to one hundred and eighty. So we subtract X from one eighty, we'll get the subtraction of Y from three hundred and sixty. Alright, so now in place of Y, we can substitute seven X divided by two. Three sixty. Seven X divided by two. Alright, now we can, uh, yeah, we can now solve all this equation. So we can write it as three point five X minus X. Three point five X.
Yes, three point five X.
Minus X is equal to one eighty.
There you go.
Then we get two point five is equal to one eighty, where X is equal to seventy two.
Seventy.
Yes, so X is seventy two, it's quite easy to calculate the value of Y. As they are between parallel lines, we can find the value of three sixty minus Y. So we can equate it, one eighty minus seventy two. Is equal to three sixty minus Y. Yeah, now if we solve this equation, we get Y is equal to two hundred and fifty two. Alright, that's done. Let's move on.
Move, move, move on. Functions, yes.
Yay.
Full of ad maths, ad maths is, bro, function of ad maths or something.
Alright, okay, so we form an equation here, so when, as soon as we see the question. We can see that, uh, if F of minus five K is equal to six seventy five, find the value of K. So we can write K.
Okay, yep, done.
Yeah, K times minus five K whole square. Because we're trying to input the equation of, uh, the given equation into the F function, right? So K times minus five K whole square. Is that done? Alright, and this is equal to six hundred seventy five.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, now, we need to just find the answer. Okay, so to find the answer, it'll be K times twenty five K square. Is equal to six seventy five. So twenty five K cube. It's five. And if we just further divide that six seventy five divided by twenty five, whole cube root, we get K is equal to three. And if we just further divide that six seventy five divided by twenty five whole cube root, we get K is equal to three.
Yes. That is it.
Yep. Find G of H of X.
Good luck.
Alright. G of H of X, so here we need to find, we know the equation of H of X, right? So we just need to input that equation into. So we are going to write. One divided by. Five. To the power of minus one. Alright, let me just tell you first what we did to five. We can see in the H of X equation, it is given seven minus two divided by five. So to take five into the upper part of the fraction, we changed its. Power from plus one to minus one. So we're going to write five to the power of minus one times seven X minus two. Minus one. Times seven X minus two. Alright, and now again, to take five to the upper part of the equation. We can change its sign back from five inverse to five positive. So it'll be five divided by seven X minus two. Alright, that's the final answer. Okay, that's great. Now for the next part, we have H inverse of X. Plus J O. Okay, so we're going to write it down and. Uh is there a question that, let me just check. Alright, no questions, alright. So H of X, we can write H of X as Y, so Y equals to seven X minus two divided by five. Now what we need to do here. Is we need to make the other element, the other variable to be the subject of the form. In this case, we need to make X the subject of the formula. Can write that as, sorry?
Nothing.
Alright, to make X the subject of the formula, we'll do five Y.
Okay.
X is equal to five Y.
X is equal to five Y.
Sorry?
Nothing. I said X is equal to five Y, okay, next.
No, 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 not S equals to five Y.
Exactly, that's what I was confused, yes.
Alright, now, see what we need to do here, first we switch the places, right? We made it.
Yep.
Y equals to seven X minus two divided by five.
Yes.
Now we need to take.
Let's go.
Sorry?
Continue, continue, let's go.
Now please.
Wait, I'm in the other ball .
You are, you're lagging a bit for me.
Oh shit, okay.
Alright, now we take five X minus two, equal to seven. Y. Divided by seven.
There you go, that should be our answer for Y.
Yes, now we have the answer for H of uh H inverse of X, now we need to add the G of X into this equation. The G of X equation is already given given as you in the question. Which is three minus ten X divided by fourteen. Could you write that down, please?
Yes, I am. Wait, what was the question? Uh three minus ten X divided by fourteen. There you go.
Alright, now we have the both equations, we need to add them and take the L C M. So the L C M of seven and fourteen will be fourteen. As in the first equation, the H inverse equation, our denominator is seven. We need to multiply the entire equation by two. So will our new equation will be ten X plus four. Plus three minus ten X.
Plus four plus three .
Minus ten X.
Minus ten X.
Divided by fourteen. Whole divided by fourteen.
There you go. Ten X will cancel out, ten seven over fourteen. She'll simplify into one over two.
Yes, that's it, ready to. That's her final answer?
Okay, yes, let's move on, question twenty.
Yep.
Yes.
Alright. Uh do we need to start this question? Cause I think the time is up.
The timer now. Hold up.
Uh sorry, I just wanted to ask what the answer was for the previous one, I didn't uh take it down.
This one? I think this should be enough for today, I'll save the files, next time I'll just start from question twenty. Should be four more, yeah, oh five more.
Oh yes, that sounds great, we will continue from here next time.
Okay, yeah, I'll just save this.
Alright, yes, Samantha?
So basically, yes, um it this is just basic addition, right? G of X and um the inverse of um H of X, right?
Yes, exactly, you're right .
So we ca- you cancelled out the the ten X and stuff, right?
Yes. Is that clear, Samantha?
Um for the first part, you said seven X is equal to five Y plus ten, right? Is that correct? I mean, I mean, I'm, I missed a little mistake.
Could you please repeat that? I think your voice is lagging a bit, I can't hear you properly. And please clarify which part are you talking about?
My value for the inverse of um X, for the inverse of um H of X. Was Y is equal to um five X plus ten over seven, so I couldn't really see where I went wrong.
Alright, okay, so please consider this uh up the. Block of information under just under the question. We have written Y is equal to seven X minus two divided by five. So now that we've made the equation equal to Y, we need to make X the subject. So see, what happens here is everything, all of the functions that were done. In the original equation, they'll be opposite. Like in the original equation, seven was being multiplied, but in the final one, it is being divided. And here two was being subtracted, here is being added. Here five was being multiplied and uh sorry, divided, and here is being multiplied, alright? So in worst meaning that all of their actions have become their opposing actions. And this is just another method to do it, to make the X for X part the subject of the formula.
Um so maybe was my mistake, the fact that when I was now making um X the subject. Of the formula , I started by saying, I started by um taking the minus two to the other side. And then it became Y plus two. Was I supposed to specifically start by multiplying five to the others?
Um yes. Yes.
Oh, okay, the the rule of math uh still counts, right?
Yes, right now, the way it's written, it's written in like two by five, right? But actually, this will be written like seven X minus two whole divided by five. Cause the entire equation is divided by five. So the first step that you can, the first step that is possible to be done, is just taking five to the other side. And without doing that first, you can move on to the next step.
So I I think I see my mistake, thank you.
Alright, that's great, thank. Thank you.
Delulu is the solution, yes, I agree, okay, yes, that should be enough for today. So let's end it.